Okay, good afternoon, everybody, or good evening, I guess. We'll call this meeting to order, Council Committee of the Whole for Monday, May the 26th. It's 6:30. We have a three agenda item today. I'll just start with a quick land acknowledgement. So the City of Medicine Hat acknowledges that we live and work on treaty territory. The city pays respect to all Indigenous people and honors their past, present, and future. We recognize and respect their culture, heritages, and relationships to the land. And having said that, I will turn the floor over to Acting City Manager Pankos to introduce our first agenda item, which is 2025 Economic Development Report.
Counselor McGrogan, can I take a second to just say, "Go Tigers"?
Yeah, wonderful. Just because they're winning?
Just in general.
Okay, beautiful.
That was inspired by Colin at Medicine Hat News. Thank you.
And we have Counselor Robbins online, is that correct?
I am online, can you hear me?
Can hear you fine, thank you. It sounds like, it looks like Counselor Sharps and Mayor Clark will not be in attendance tonight. Anything else?
Can I just, can I just ask a question? I don't see anybody. I just see, so I don't, yeah, I don't see anyone. I just see another participant. Ah, there you are, Laura. Okay, I'll be quiet now.
Okay, thank you. So we'll start with our first agenda item.
Thank you. Through the chair, we have Director Selena McLean-Moore to walk us through the Q1 2025 report to council on our Medicine Hat economic development efforts. Thank you.
Good evening, council. So Medicine Hat Economic Development continues to implement the key projects and initiatives under its four-pillar strategy, which includes business and industry development, workforce development, investment attraction, and investment and growth readiness. This presentation will provide an overview of the work that has taken place in the first quarter of 2025. I just want to, with that caveat, a caveat that I realize that we are already almost into June, this presentation was delayed by a month due to us not being able to present at a DNI committee meeting, which then delayed it. So some of the work that we're doing now is not going to actually be in this presentation because the presentation went through admin committee before, before coming here, and that was a couple of months ago. So, okay, so our agenda, so we're just going to, what I want to do is recap the past council presentations, just to remind council of the work that we've done with you in the first quarter, and then give you a progress update towards the council priorities as well. We will look at the four-pillar strategy and the updates around that, and then what we'll be looking at accomplishing for quarter two and quarter three. So I was, I came to council three times between January and March to deliver presentations on three separate items. In February, council carried a motion to pause the rural renewal stream application intake with the intention of reviewing its status in January 2026, or if significant changes were made to the provincial or federal level. In March, council carried a motion to amend the non-residential tax credit program and add a residential tax credit program component for new multiple-unit housing projects, which would replace the housing infill and redevelopment program that we ran just last year. And in March also, Medicine Hat Economic Development attended closed council to provide an update on a confidential investment, investment project. So as far as progress towards council's priority number three, Medicine Hat Economic Development falls under two of those, two of those priorities, the action of the Regional Economic Development Action Plan. So this is referred to as the Southeast Alberta Economic Opportunity Strategy, which was launched in January. Work has begun on the implementation framework with a kickoff session for regional stakeholder, regional service providers that took place in March. We had another session in April. The desired outcome of this final set, of that final session was the creation of a roles and responsibilities metric, which identifies organizations that are going to lead the activities from the strategy. The second priority that we have addressed is creating opportunities to incentivize, risk, and reduce barriers. So the commercial and residential incentive programs will be launched in Q2 of 2025, and we are also now working on a Business and Industry Navigator Service that is in development and will be launched in Q3 of 2025. So I'm very confident that we are making good progress towards the council priorities. All right, so the first pillar that I'm going to, I'm going to talk about here is the Business and Industry Development Pillar. Over the past year, the department and our regional partners have engaged with business and industry as part of the Business Retention and Expansion Industry Specific Program. This program gives us an opportunity to talk to business and industry to understand their pain points, challenges, and opportunities. Over the past year, we've surveyed 45 businesses in the defense, aerospace, and aviation sectors. We are referring that to them as the air sector and the manufacturing sectors. So this program started first with industry-specific advisory panels, where we brought key individuals from those sectors together in a room to talk about what they were seeing as far as those challenges and opportunities. From there, we developed a survey and implemented that survey with our regional partners, and from there, we analyzed the survey and came up with a report. So that, that report did identify some action items that we would be able to take to support the industry. What we decided to do, which I, I think that this is one of the key successes to this program, is that we decided to, we validated those action items with industry. So on January 20th, we held a State of the Industry Roundtable for Defense, Aerospace, and Aviation to validate the set of recommendations to support the sector. From those validated, validated actions, we delivered a report called the State of the Industry Report, which was launched and had eight recommended actions to support business retention and expansion and attraction in Medicine Hat and Southeast Alberta's air, eight, we'll say, defense, aerospace, and aviation sectors. Several actions are underway, such as continued efforts to attract new investment, coordinated approaches to grant funding, the establishment of a Defense and Aerospace Advisory Group, branding of the industry, advocacy, and relationship-building efforts with government entities such as DRDC and provincial departments. So if I move on to the workforce development pillar, Rural Renewal, Medicine Hat Rural Renewal Program, also known as the Southeast Alberta Municipal Immigration Program, is an initiative that aims to attract immigrants to the region to support labor market needs. As we refer to it as SAMI. SAMI's immigration efforts have supported the municipalities of Medicine Hat, Cypress County, Town of Bow Island, and the Town of Redcliffe. SAMI also aims to retain the newcomers by contributing to programming that will build an inclusive community. So due to a significant decrease, and you're, you're aware of this, due to a significant decrease of provincial allocations and a backlog of applications in the system, in February, council carried a motion to pause the rural renewal stream application intake with the intention of reviewing its status in January 2026, or if significant changes are made at the program or the provincial or federal level. So some of the key, key successes to this, to this program to date, we have had 126 employer consultations, 86 job vacancies have been shared, 95 candidate interviews were done, and 88 endorsement letters have been issued. An average age of all workers supported through the program is 29, and an average wage of all workers supported through the program is $24.73. We just asked a couple, we asked a couple of the employers who access the program to provide some testimonials. We've got the first one from ITO Japan. My two employees have worked with the business for two years, and they have built the skill and experience over time. They are now able to train new employees and are dedicated to support the business growth. Being able to keep them here through the Rural Renewal Program will help my business in the future, since they, they have the experience new hires do not have. The second testimonial was from Town Place Suites. We are the only Marriott hotel in town, and when, and, and when people think of the Marriott, they hold it to a high standard. When I was looking for an operations manager, I looked for six months before I found someone who was qualified and willing to move to Medicine Hat. So this program helps me manage, fill my management positions. I found someone who knows the industry and the business, and I'd like to keep her. Okay, so also under workforce development, under the, under the business retention and expansion work, one of the things that, one of the things that was noted in both of the sectors is that labor continues to be a very, a very big issue. I know that our labor, like our, our unemployment rate is increasing. I think the government, the government of Alberta just released the stats a couple weeks ago. I know that the Alberta unemployment rate is 7.1%, so it's climbing. But what we're finding is that we're still seeing the same issues with, with retaining labor and also finding access to the skilled labor. And so what this leads us to believe is that there's a gap. There are certain industries that are, are not struggling to find that labor, but a lot of the industries in the STEM, STEM sectors in particular, so that's science, technology, engineering, and math sectors, are, are struggling to still retain their staff, find their staff, and get the appropriate training for their staff. So the defense and aerospace and aviation sector is anticipating major shortages, with over 50% of the companies rating workforce availability as poor. When asked about the cause of these hiring challenges, most employers identified high wage rates and costs of training, coupled with global competition for skilled workforce and employee hesitation to relocate. 50%, 56% of manufacturing sector has also indicated experiencing challenging, challenges with workforce availability, and 96% expressed they are willing to or are already engaged in sending their employees for upskilling. So this is why we successfully applied for roughly $240,000 in grant funding for the following activities to be implemented in 2025, 2026. The first one, we are leading a workforce attraction mission with an aim to attract highly educated workers to Medicine Hat to fill vacant skilled positions. Number two, we're creating a workforce attraction toolkit, a Medicine Hat specific guide for employers to support recruiting. And three, we're going to, we are going to work on a project that promotes the international credential recognition and competency-based assessment tools to support labor market integration. Okay, we held an event on March 26th. It was the Workforce Economic Workshop. This was, this was a full-day event aimed at assisting local employers in effectively recruiting, retaining, and managing quality employees. The event was supported by partners, Community Futures Autrecorp, Medicine Hat Local Immigration Partnership, and Jobs, Economy, Trade, and Immigration. So this event reflected the city's commitment to supporting businesses in building inclusive and effective teams, contributing to the region's overall economic growth and success. We had 37 attendees, including employers, support organizations, government, and industry experts. Employers gained better understanding of employment supports available to them and learned better retention practices to keep their employees. 100% of the post-event survey respondents said they would attend the event again. Okay, and finally, with workforce, we created a series of community of choice videos that highlight the strengths of the four communities that were involved in the Rural Renewal Program. So those being Medicine Hat, Redcliffe, Bow Island, and Cypress County. The videos have been provided to municipal leaders and organizations to serve as a promotional tool to attract newcomers. Promotion and sharing is expected to begin in April. We will be using this for the work that we're doing in the next, in the next projects we'll be working on over the next couple of years. So I'm going to let this play now, I think. Do we have? So I'll just share that that video is meant for communities to be able to put their own branding on it, so our partners can usually utilize that when they're trying to attract newcomers to the community. That's why there wasn't really any type of branding on that video. Okay, investment attraction. In the first quarter of this year, and now with increased capacity, we have moved from responsive to proactive investment attraction. We were successful in securing 41,000 in funding through the CAN export for an investment attraction strategy, which include marketing tool development and investment attraction coaching for senior administration and council. The strategy will include the key sectors of defense and aerospace, agri-food, and energy. It will also include marketing tools, coaching, and lead generation. We are now, one thing I want to mention about this is, even though we are working on our strategy, I would say this is another piece of our department. I used to say that, that when we first started the department in 2023 and 2024, that we were building the plane while we're flying it. Well, I would say that now we're, we're past that stage, except for investment attraction. We're building the plane while we're flying it. So my investment manager of investment attraction, Al Sharma, is actually leaving tomorrow for a conference called CANSEC, which is a Defense and Aerospace Conference. So even though we are in the strategy development, we are still out there networking and promoting Medicine Hat to those key sectors. So we're now identifying this, the, the, the strategy will support us in identifying the region's value proposition and key assets. We will be conducting a comparative analysis with similar and adjacent locations, identifying subsectors and geographical regions with the greatest potential, and identifying key industry events. We will also identify infrastructure and regulatory roadblocks to investment. So we have identified some key investment attraction targets, because I know this has been a question around the horseshoe since, since the establishment of the department. And so I thought I would share those with you today. So the first one is a continual pipeline of four to five active investments with a high probability of success and an estimated one to three time, year timeframe for a decision. That's the first one. Second one is regular communication with 10 to 15 companies with an estimated three-to-five year timeframe for decision, with a goal of moving these companies to a medium-to-high probability pipeline. The third is, those are the two. We expect to hit these targets for lead generation in Q3 of 2025. And for Q1, we, we, we had, supported three active investments and entertained seven inquiries. So as well, for investment attraction, Al attended the International Council of Shopping Centers, which is a global organization that was founded in 1957, featuring over 70,000 members from more than 100 countries. Its membership includes shopping center owners, developers, managers, marketing specialists, investors, retailers, retailers, brokers, academics, and public officials. So Medicine Hat Economic Development attended the ICSC, which is referred to, Whistler Conference, to learn more about the industry and network with stakeholders regarding Medicine Hat real estate. The event drew 2,200 delegates, and Medicine Hat Economic Development generated interest in Medicine Hat real estate and made 50 contacts, and regular engagement is now taking place. DRDC relationship building, Medicine Hat Economic Development has facilitated a number of meetings with DRDC and CFB Southfield to learn more about the structure, modernization plans, and ongoing incentives. Valuable insight has been gained and grounds established for continued engagement to work together for developing the local economy. DRDC fully understands the opportunities for collaboration. What I could share with this one is, in my time in economic development, I've, I've, I don't think I've ever seen DRDC is engaged in supporting economic development and working with the municipalities as I have over these past few months. So I'm really looking forward to what we might be able to accomplish working with, working closely with that department. Okay, finally, our investment and growth readiness. So as I had previously alluded to, in January, the Southeast Alberta Economic Opportunity Strategy was launched, and the finalization of the framework is underway. Stakeholders and service providers attended workshops on March 18th and April 7th to begin the process of building the framework. These sessions will support execution of the action items identified by the strategy. 24 providers in attendance and significant engagement on, on strategy priorities, there was 24 service providers in attendance. The other thing that we're working on with, with the regional strategy is we just launched the Agriculture and Agri-Food Investment Attraction Strategy. So this is resulting from an action item identified by the strategy, and a request for qualifications was sent out in a limited procurement process to solicit proposals for the completion of this investment attraction strategy. Successful proponents, the successful proponent, proponent has been selected, and work to complete this strategy is underway. The work will be completed by August 31st. Our incentive programs. So Medicine Hat Economic Development is in the process of developing a residential tax exemption program for new multiple-unit housing projects to replace last year's HIRIP program. That will be coming to council at the beginning of June, I believe, June 2nd. We are also refreshing the current city center vibrancy to continue to support business with improved projects in our city center area. And finally, the department is also investigating adjustments to the non-residential incentive to include eligible, eligibility for new investment and expansion of existing business. We've continued to administer the 23-24 incentive programs. The, the Housing Infill and Redevelopment Incentive Program saw 10 projects for just over 1.8 million funds committed, and up to 160 new units have been proposed under that incentive. And the 2024 City Center Vibrancy saw eight properties approved for $200,000 committed to that. A testimonial from one of the developers who accessed the Housing Infill and Redevelopment Program, from Sunny Atwell. "As a partner in Sun City Developments, I want to express our gratitude to Medicine Hat Economic Development for the incentive that we received for our project on 954 Second Street." This is in, this is development, 79 units. It's going up by the river, and it's getting quite large. "We are proud to be a part of the community that actively supports business growth and innovation. The assistance enabled us to move forward with lots of confidence and reducing our project cost. More than just a financial relief, the incentive signaled a strong commitment to growth from the City of Medicine Hat. Regards, Sunny Atwell." Okay, and finally, just there are, you know, our day-to-day business does, we, we are open for business when it comes to business and industry that might need, might need concierge-type service into the city, or just even support with other types of organizations that can support business growth. On January 29th, we connected, we, we connect quarterly, and so on January 29th, we hosted a connection meeting with other business support organizations to build relationships, share, and learn, and collaborate. We have the service, so the service providers are better equipped to refer each other to business and industry needing support. Nine attendees representing Medicine Hat Economic Development, Community Futures, Apex Regional Innovation Network, Medicine Hat College, Southeast Alberta Chamber of Commerce, Government of Alberta, and Cypress County attended. We also partnered with the Land and Real Estate Department to deliver the Medicine Hat Real Estate Education Session. This is 20 staff attended, representing Medicine Hat Economic Development, Land and Real Estate, Planning, Assessment, Parks and Recreation, Community Development, Utilities, and Municipal Works. And really, what the intent was this was for other city departments to learn more about the current state of real estate and mortgage in Medicine Hat. And we continue to answer business inquiries and connections. Medicine Hat Economic Development continues to support business and industry through event participation, pathfinding, and introductions. In the first quarter, we met with 12 business organizations and entrepreneurs to support needs they had with the community and within the City of Medicine Hat organization. We attended six community networking events and business, business grand opening events. So finally, I just wanted to give a little bit of a sneak peek at what we're going to be working on in quarter two, what we are working on in quarter two, and what we'll be working on in quarter three. Finalization of the, the implementation framework for the regional strategy, development of a Business and Industry Navigator Service, approval and implementation of residential and commercial incentives, competency, competency-based assessment for employers, Medicine Hat Workforce Group facilitation, State of the Industry Manufacturing Roundtable and, and report, execution of recommended actions from the regional strategy and State of the Industry Reports, agriculture, defense, and aerospace investment attraction strategies, continue building investment pipeline and servicing key leads, and a test, and an attendance at the, at defense and aerospace industry events. And that's all I have for, for you today.
Okay, thank you for that. Any questions from anyone, comments? Oh, oh, I guess I do have a screen, sorry. Counselor Bendig.
Thank you very much through the chair. I had a question regarding the workforce development. I wondered, what is the conduit between local employers that have a need for employees that they can't find, and, say, Medicine Hat College, or other educational post-secondary or training facilities? Is the city part of that, or is there another mechanism that that information is relayed?
Thanks. Through the chair, I think that the, there would be multiple conduits. So we are, that's one of the, one of the things that I had mentioned on the key deliver, deliverables for quarter two and quarter three is a Medicine Hat Workforce Group, which Medicine Hat Economic Development is going to be leading. Medicine Hat Economic Development is going to be leading. And what this is, is it's a key group of stakeholders that work directly with employers and understand the workforce, the workforce needs well. We are meeting on a monthly basis to ensure that we all have the right information and that that information is being shared with the appropriate parties. Does that answer your question? Okay.
Counselor Knodel.
Thank you, Counselor McGrogan, through the chair. Just general comments. I think this is massive. I think that the one thing that I imagine your department as, and I definitely think big picture oftentimes and have to work my way down to the details, but you're, you're acting as a hub in so many different facets to ensure a smooth process for many different areas in the community. And what I appreciated early on in the presentation is you, you mentioned that you checked with your stakeholders to ensure the goals that you were setting resonated with them and that they were in alignment with those goals. I thought that was great work and hope that, and I think there's other, there's other departments in this organization that do that, but just to make that clear and to make that evident in our, in the presentation was great. Ultimately, I'm, I'm happy to hear that there's some positive movement forward with, I'm going to say the acronym wrong, I'm just, I'm just going to say Suffield because that's, the acronym is, is over my head right now, but DRDC, thank you. DRDC. There's, yeah, I think that it's hard because I'm, my brain wants to, I want to go to like, let's, let's put a ribbon on this project over here, see this expansive opening of an industry that employs however many people. And the hard thing is, is that right now you're, you're laying the foundation and each time you come to us, it's kind of like you're digging a little bit deeper into making sure that that's possible. So I recognize the vastness of the work that's being done by your team and there's not all that many of you considering how much is required in order to get this done, but thank you for sharing this with us and I'm, I am, I'm excited because I, I have confidence that in time that those big ribbon events, or not events, but big ribbons circumstances will be in front of us, but it does take time and you're building relationships and that's very evident. So thank you for making, making the face of the city in this regard a positive experience for stakeholders.
Counselor Dumanowski.
Thank you through the chair. Thank you Director McLeanmore for the presentation. I, I do appreciate the intentionality around kind of breaking up the report into segments that align well with kind of the, the goals and strategies for your department and, and I also appreciate the, the, the concept around strategy development. Great analogies that you made, kind of building the plan as, as we're still moving through, through this whole process. But some, I guess my question would be around some of the inquiries that we're getting. And as diverse as they, I'm sure are, are there any real and or perceived gaps that are, or that are being, that are coming, coming to the surface as far as what we need to do or not need to do? And I, I always think back to over the years, our industrial base and are we, are we in a state of readiness because they, are we shovel ready, all, all that vernacular, right? Are we, are, are there any themes that are kind of coming to the surface around a gap that we can activate or do, do more to move that timeline forward? In some cases, you indicated some of those inquiries are X years away and, and again, you're, you're sowing the seeds and I, and I appreciate that. And there's nothing more difficult than having a bunch of politicians say, well, where are the jobs? Where, where are the red, you know, ribbon cuttings? And, and they will come. But are there any noticeable or systemic gaps or issues that are kind of floating to the surface that, that we're always going to be dealing with unless we invest proactively or tackle in advance of future opportunities? Because in many of these cases, you know, in the past, we would hear that they, it's hard to plan for these things, but yet, and yet, when they, when they are coming to the surface, they're looking for shovel ready or something, a quick turnaround time, in which case we're, we're behind the game in that regard. So hopefully, it's a fair question to ask.
Thank you, Counselor Dumanowski, through the chair. Yeah, I, I think it's, it's a really good question. I'm not sure if you all remember my, I know I've done a couple of presentations where I've went over the engine of economic development where we had the, the enablers, which are considered things like land, infrastructure, bylaws, healthy communities. Those are the things that, that we, that we need to take care of and we need to be proactive about in order to be able to allow economic developers to do their work. And so what you're asking is what can the city do to support, to support those, the enabling infrastructure, right? And as far as gaps, I would say, you know, well, let's talk first about land. I think that, I think that we've got some really good opportunity in the Northwest Industrial Park. I know that there was, there was conversation about, you know, years back, should we develop this? Should we put the services in? There was, you know, two schools of thought that we should try and be, you know, build it and they will come. And the, the second school of thought was, no, we need to, you know, cool our jets. We don't want to put a whole bunch of infrastructure in Northwest Industrial Park if it's not going to be used because it's, you know, it's depreciating as it sits in the ground. I, I tend to agree with, with that line of thinking because what, what I see coming across my desk is that every investor needs something different. And so we can build the infrastructure out into Northwest Industrial Park, but it doesn't necessarily mean that's where, that's where we're going to need it. So it could be a very costly thing to do. The other thing is that a lot of these investments that we would be looking at for, out in that area are going to take, you know, they're going to take two to three years to come to fruition and so there is time to build out that infrastructure. So in, in my personal opinion, I think that we're okay with that. So that's land. I think resources is something that we're always, you know, we're, we're always continually having to look at. Do we have the, do we have enough electricity? Do we have enough natural gas? Do we have enough water? And I mean, I don't, I don't need to go into too much around water. We all know what, what that state is like. Natural gas is something that I think we have an opportunity to, you know, find some creative solutions so that we can become, you know, more of a, 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 a community that can attract businesses that need that natural gas. One of the opportunities I think we have in the future is the fact that we have a carbon capture and storage hub. And so those hubs are needing industry that use natural gas. So we need to look at how we creatively find solutions to getting, getting more gas down in Southeast Alberta. So I would say that that would be one that we, we could definitely look at. If I were to talk about, you know, if we're talking about the, you know, bylaws and, and permitting and, and those, those types of things that are also enablers, I, I think that we're, we're doing, we're doing relatively okay. We have a non-residential incentive which allows us to be able to entertain incenting investments over, over a certain amount. We are considering coming to council and asking to possibly decrease that amount or to change the way that that incentive is administered as far as maybe looking at, maybe looking at business like retention and expansion, not just investment attraction of businesses. So those are things that we are investigating. I don't, is there, does that help?
No, that does. I, I appreciate that. As you were talking, if I could through the chair, sorry. I'm thinking, I mean, when you look at bigger centers like Calgary, drive through it, we all do, you see those business parks, they're, they're building these massive parks, ready, ready to go kind of things. There, there's no particular business there yet, but they're, they have the parks in readiness state now. Comparing us to Calgary is not prudent, but in the end, I always think, to your last point around, how do we, how do we keep our industry base and how do we create an environment or facilitate things that will incentivize them to expand or grow or create ancillary business support around what we have? And again, that's always been kind of one of the other prudent courses, but I, I'm just heartened that, you know, we've got some good tentacles out there, we've got something beyond that. We've got, you know, experts working with the other experts and, and just know that this council and next council are always ready to, to put some of those pieces in place. I know you know that, but you know, challenge us to, to do more where you see value-added opportunities. Thank you.
Can I add one more thing? Counselor Dumanowski? I'm sorry. I just wanted to also mention that one of the things that we can do over and above, so if we're, if we decide we're not going to build it and they will come, we're not going to take that, that route. One of the things that we can do is we can make sure that our, our processes are streamlined. So that is one thing that we are, you know, we have definitely connected with, with Director Popoff on that piece. Also looking at things like how can we, how can we ensure that business knows the proper processes that they're going to go through before they come? How can we make sure that certain environmental studies have been done on, let's say, the Northwest Industrial Park in, ahead of time to be able to save time on those things? So I think that there's the hard infrastructure and then there's the, I'll call it like the kind of the soft services. I think that that's where we can possibly make a difference and be more ready than the community down, down the road. Okay.
Counselor Hirsch.
Thanks through the chair. Thanks very much for the presentation. I, I guess along the same lines as Counselor Dumanowski, I just wrote down, what do you need from council? And it might be past iterations, and I'm almost thinking twenty years ago, sat down with the Economic Development Officer at the time and we had a pretty pointed conversation. He says, do you want me to present the dog and pony show? Or do you want us, do you want me to say and come to the table saying, this is what we need? Let's get to an action plan. And I guess I'm more of a, an individual that says, let's just kind of roll up our sleeves. I appreciate a lot of the efforts in terms of developing the plan as you, you call it. The challenge is, and we've had this conversation before, is when you take the time to develop the plane, the opportunities that don't come very often may walk us by. And I guess, I just want to ensure, and I guess my question is, you know, we talk about long lead times, so I'm in this business development world and I know the cycle and what that looks like and you almost have to drip and work on things that can maybe take two or three years. So a little bit of public questioning I get lots is, you know, we've got a robust economic development team, what are we doing for proactive reach outs that says, we have this to offer? So if we got that in that mind, what businesses could, could result in relocating Medicine Hat and actually driving success there? So is that, maybe you can elaborate within your team, is that the case that there's proactive, and I wouldn't call it cold calling because it's just you're not picking up the phone, but you're actually doing some research, understanding some things. Because why the long lead time is that some of these businesses are either in leases in the places they're at there now, or they have to, they own it and maybe it's a specialized property and they have to take some time to sell it, which, which means we need to be proactive in planning, back to your point on build it, will they come? It's almost like we can't do nothing, but we have to do something and right in the middle is where we need to be in terms of planning, okay, we've got a lead here, how realistic, what's their timelines, and then trying to coordinate. And I probably encapsulated economic development right there, but maybe you can speak to that in terms of your methodology on the ED front because, believe me, I get business retention, all that kind of stuff is very important. But the challenge is, you walk around the city of Medicine Hat and they say, what's new coming? So just, just maybe your thoughts on that?
Sure. Through the chair, thanks for that, thanks for that question, Counselor Hirsch. I think that we, I, I, what I could say is that we approach, we approach investment attraction from a number of different angles. So first of all, there is the strategy development and I understand that we, we, we need to keep moving even though there is strategy development. And so, you know, we work, I'm, I'm just going to maybe name three things. So the first one is we've got an internal, we've got a network of peers across Canada that are, are also connecting with industry that would be interested in moving to Alberta, moving to Southeast Alberta, wherever that, wherever the location suits them. So we work very closely with organizations such as Invest in Canada, Invest Alberta, Global Affairs, Jobs Economy, Trade, and Immigration. There's multiple, multiple organizations that we work with closely. So that's the first one. Second one is, we also scan, we, we have, we, we have a program where we actually get AI-generated investment leads. So that's a, a program that scans through business documents, magazines, anything published to say, this company could be expanding, this company is investing, and we get a list. And so we proactively go after those, those leads. The third thing would probably be around events. So another piece of investment attraction is making sure that you're, you're meeting with the right people, you're creating that network. We are in our infancy. So, you know, we are looking at the defense and aerospace as a target for this area and so we're building, we're building our networks and it's getting out there. You know, people within those, within, within that sector are really starting to see that Medicine Hat has opportunity. Within, within those, those events, we also meet with consultants that understand, so we have a defense and aerospace consultant who understands the industry very well. Spence Fraser, who is very well-known in the defense and aerospace industry, he's the owner of Landing Zones, was extremely, he was very, very happy to hear the consultant we're working with because of his connections. So we're basically, we are finding connections and leveraging those connections for their connections. So we've got, we're, we're targeting our investment attraction from many angles.
Thank you. I just had a couple, one kind of minor question. I'm curious about your shopping center conference and I, as I think of Medicine Hat, did we come back and did we learn any trends or things that we could do as a city to, because you know, you go to the, you know, I think of the Medicine Hat Mall and how empty it is and did we learn anything that would help us help them, I guess, continue to grow as a, as a group? That's my first one.
Thanks, Counselor McGrogan. I would say, you know, we did make some really good connections when, when Manager Sharma came back. He was, he was really excited about the work that he'd done and he was able to promote Medicine Hat Real Estate. He did have some people that were in some franchises that were interested in learning more about Medicine Hat. What I will say around attracting commercial is we need industry. We need jobs and we need, we need to start seeing those, those bigger industries come to Medicine Hat because that's what's going to build our commercial sector. It's, it's the industry that is going to support the success of that sector.
Yeah, thank you. I was curious about the, our relationship with the chamber because most of everything that you've talked about tonight does kind of coincide with the chamber's purpose. And I'm wondering how we're working with them and if there's some opportunities to work closer or, or more, I guess, in step or are we? I guess I'm curious about the state of the union as far as that relationship goes.
Sure, through the chair. We work very closely with the chamber. So I meet on a regular basie, basis with Lisa Dressler, the executive director. I understand her work, you know, her strategy and she understands ours. And when we find times or places where we can collab- we can collaborate, we are doing that. So we hold events together, we work on our incentives. I work really closely with her UDI committee to make, make sure that they're aware of our incentive programs. We are considering doing a mission together to ICSC next year. So wherever possible, we are collaborating.
Yeah, thank you. Good to hear it. I'm sure that you were, and I think it's good for the folks that are listening to hear that. So thanks very much. Thanks for the presentation. I thought overall it was a great update on where things are at right now, and I like your analogy of the, the plane. Building it as we go, we just don't want to run out of fuel while it's up there. So thanks for all the work you're doing. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, so thanks very much. It looks like we're moving on to our second item, which is financial reserve overview, and I'll have Acting City Manager Pancoast introduce, I guess, the next topic.
Thank you. While Director Barta comes down, I'll turn it over to Managing Director Campbell for a quick interview.
Thank you. Through the chair, so Director Barta is here to provide information on the five financial reserves, the two reserve policies, and bylaw 4827, which is for the Medicine Hat Endowment Fund. This information was requested in January by council and was completed after the financial audit results were presented to Audit Committee on April 1st of this year. And so I will pass it over to Director Barta to present.
Okay, thank you, and good evening. So why does the city need reserves? Reserves restrict funds to meet current and future requirements and obligations. So the funds are earmarked for a specific purpose. This is similar to your savings account. You may put funds away for home renovations or unexpected repairs, such as a furnace breakdown or a roof repair. The city also needs to set funds aside to pay for capital. So the city invests 110 million every year in sustaining capital projects. Capital is expensive, and timing of the cash flows is often lumpy. So we need to ensure that we have sufficient funds to pay for these capital expenditures today and into the future. Reserves also help the city grow. Beyond maintaining our capital asset infrastructure, the reserves also provide an opportunity for the city to expand services and amenities to improve the quality of life for its residents. Reserves provide the ability to pay for these growth projects. So some of these may include new substations or new rec facilities. Reserves can be used to fund the budget gap or the municipal deficit. So cities are not allowed to run deficits. So in years when we don't have enough cash to cover the municipal deficit, we use reserves. We have been working hard to close the budget gap. However, even with a closed budget gap, there still is the possibility that the city could have an operational deficit in any given year, given things that occur like damages from a storm, flood, or drought, or even unusually snowy winter that would result in more snow clearing than what we had planned. Reserves can help pay for liabilities or future obligations. So at the end of 2024, the city had 635 million in liabilities, which included debt of 363 million and an asset retirement obligation of 138 million. This did not include any costs related to the energy transition. And you'll see later in this presentation that we have now set up two separate reserves that will, one that's dedicated for the abandonment obligations and one for energy transition requirements. Reserves can help reduce debt. So debt, as we've seen, has been more expensive over the past few years. So utilizing reserves can help reduce the burden of our, on our future generations for debt principal and interest payments. We want to ensure that we are operating within our city debt limit of the 70%, and that we have a balance between using debt and using reserves. There is a cost to both. So for debt, it's the interest expense, and for reserves, it's the loss of investment revenue. Investment revenue also helps reduce the budget gap and fund the municipal operations. Reserves also provide the ability for the city to plan for steady predictable tax rates by allowing the city to use reserve funds to offset revenue and expense volatility or operational uncertainties such as inflation impacts or tariff costs. So we have two policies. The distributable funds dividend policy creates a simple, uniform policy across all business units. It promotes financial stewardship and ensures funds continue to be available for current and future needs. The financial reserve policy avoids over or under-reserving of cash. It enables effective financial planning and fosters a more effective use of capital. We also have one bylaw, the Medicine Hat Endowment Fund, and this has been established to benefit the people of Medicine Hat on a long-term basis. So the primary objectives. The distributable funds dividend policy has two primary objectives. Long-term sustainability, where earnings are retained in the business unit to cover all operating costs and sustaining and maintenance capital required to provide current levels of service. And the other one is to return a reasonable amount of earnings towards financial reserves, as well as provide a municipal dividend to support municipal operations. The policy creates a financial metric called free cash flow, and we'll talk a little bit more about this in the, in the next slides to come. But this is used for tracking the profitability of the business units. And so we want to make sure that we have proper management of free cash flow to ensure that the business units are being operated effectively, that they're remaining cash positive, and that they are providing funds to the reserves as opposed to draining funds from the reserves. The financial reserves policy objective is sustainability. So to main, maintain and improve the city's working capital requirements, stabilization for fluctuations in operating and capital activities, and volatility in revenue and expenditures, and long-term planning. So provide equity for future growth capital, support asset management planning, contingencies, and endowment savings. The policy centralizes the city's financial reserves for the purpose of allowing management control to ensure that reinvestment of these funds take into consideration what is optimal for the city as a whole, and not what is in the best interest of one business unit. So this allows for the city to assess its future needs and ensure funds are being allocated to the appropriate Medicine Hat is privileged to be one of the few cities in North America with an endowment fund, and so we have the opportunity to make an impact in our community and do something inspiring and transformational with the investment income generated by this fund. The benefit generated by the endowment should be consistent over time, and the people of this community should receive that benefit not just now, but forever. Three broad areas were identified where the largest impacts could be made in Medicine Hat and are aligned, are aligned with council's strategic plans. So the first one is financial sustainability. This is where we would use the funds to provide operating budget support to reduce the burden on the Medicine Hat taxpayers. This has been included as part of the 2526 budget to reduce the municipal budget gap and therefore subsidize tax increases. Economic evolution is to fund programs that focus on diversification and econo, pardon me, economic growth to stimulate the local economy and attract new development and businesses to Medicine Hat. And third, community livability. So to funds programs that enhance livability and ensure that Medicine Hat continues to be a great place to live and work. So just to clarify, that this is not to restrict the funds to these three areas, but to use as a general funding stream to supplement these areas. The fund is established as a separate restricted reserve. The target balance of this reserve is 200 million, and earnings above inflation can, can be transferred out and utilized, and we'll take a closer look at this in the next few slides. So where does the money come from? Like any savings account, we need to continue to replenish the savings account so funds are available when needed. The distributable funds dividend policy provides the framework for this. So as I mentioned, the model is based on a free cash flow, which is cash that is left over from the business unit after they pay for their operating expenses and sustaining capital assets. It leaves funds in the business unit to ensure that sufficient funding is available for operations, maintenance, and sustaining capital, as well as debt payments. Free cash flow earnings from the business units flow into municipal operations and into the reserves in a tiered priority. Investment income earned while funds are sitting in the reserves flow to the municipality, helping to close the budget gap. The only exception to this would be investment income earned by the Medicine Hat Endowment Fund, the abandonment and energy transition reserves, where the investment earnings flow directly to those reserves. The use of the funds in the reserves are for covering the budget gap, operating and capital purchases, abandonment and energy transition. So the city has five established financial reserves, and we will go through each one of these in more detail in the next few slides. So the operating reserve, the purpose is to stabilize fluctuations in operating activity and address the risk of revenue and expenditure volatility. The source of funding is free cash flow or other sources as approved by council, as well as any municipal operation excess surplus. We do have a target balance in this re, reserve, which ranges from 10% to 30% of annual municipal expenditures. The city utilizes an average of 15 million annually from reserves, and a good portion of this is used to fund the budget gap. So in 2024, the budget gap was 11.6 million, and in 2025, the gap is budgeted at 11.1 million. At the end of 2024, we had a balance of about 35 million in this reserve. So if 15 million is withdrawn annually, and we don't have sufficient funds to put back into this reserve, this re, this reserve would only last two to three years. The capital reserve purpose is to support funding of the city's capital requirements. The source of funding is free cash flow or other sources as approved by council, and we don't have a target balance on this one. So as I mentioned previously, the city invests close to 100 million every year in sustaining capital projects. However, that amount is not fully funded through this reserve. The city also uses debt and grants to pay for capital. So on average, the city uses 50 million annually from this reserve to pay for capital. At the end of 2024, we had a balance of 208 million. So if 50 million was used from this reserve annually, and we didn't have sufficient funds to put back into the reserve, it would be depleted within four years. The Medicine Hat Endowment is cre, has been created as an endowment fund for the benefit of the citizens of Medicine Hat. The funding for this reserve is free cash flow and other sources as approved by council. We do have a target balance of 200 million. So this reserve will earn interest and is adjusted and protected for inflation using the Alberta Consumer Price Index. So what does that mean? As per the bylaw, we are only able to withdraw earnings above inflation. Our investment portfolio is designed to achieve a 5.5% return over the long term. So if we assume a 2% consumer price index, then the investments that would be available to fund out of this reserve would be approximately 7 million. So it's taking the 200 million times the three and a half percent interest rate. The 25 to 26 budget includes a withdrawal of 5 million in each year to be used for financial sustainability, so to fund the budget gap, and to fund projects related to economic evolution and community livability. This also helps subsidize tax increases, as the projects would be funded from this endowment rather than through property taxes. If we did not have the availability of these funds, we would require a 5.5% tax increases, or we would not be able to complete these projects. The abandonment obligation reserve is to support the funding of the city's asset retirement obligations. The source of funding is free cash flow or other sources as approved by council, and we don't have a target balance on this reserve. So this was a new reserve that was created in 2024. It received an initial one-time transfer of 75 million from unrestricted surplus, and this reserve will earn interest. So at the end of 2024, the asset retirement obligation was 138 million, and this did not have a provision for the power plant. So this is primarily related to our oil and gas assets. So only 55% of this amount is currently funded by the 76 million that's sitting in this reserve. So this reserve does need to continue to grow and pay, in, in order to pay for future asset retirement obligations. The energy transition reserve, the purpose is to support the funding of the city's energy transition, to achieve a net zero emissions target as prescribed by the provincial and federal government. The source of funding is free cash flow and other sources as approved by council, and we don't have a target balance on this. This was the other reserve that was set up in 2024, and it, it received a one-time transfer of 75 million from unrestricted surplus, and this reserve will earn interest. We know that there's cert, uncertainty around the energy transition costs. We know that they are going to be quite expensive, so not only in the millions, but it could even be in the billions of dollars. And so this reserve needs to continue to grow to pay for the future requirements. So it may seem like the city has a lot of money in its reserves, but there is great uncertainty into the future. Reserves provide financial sustainability. So if we had a bad year, our reser, our reserves provide some flexibility or a cushion until we get a better year. Funds are restricted or earmarked for items that are needed in the future. Reserves need to continue to grow to provide investment income and be available when future cash flow is not sufficient. So the graph on the left shows the annual free cash flow. You can see that in 2021 to 2023, the city had large amounts of free cash flow, and this was primarily due to higher electric commodity prices. However, the forecasted electric commodity prices from 2024 to 2031 are expected to decline. And so the average annual free cash flow is expected to be approximately 13 million, which means that the free cash flows will not be sufficient to cover the withdrawals from the reserve. The graph on the right shows the average net draw on reserves is about 40 million. So just a few things about this graph. It only shows the reserves amounts. It does not include any deferred revenue or unrestricted cash. It also see, assumes that the energy transition reserve of 76 million would be utilized by the end of 2025, and it does not include any provisions for facilities for the future. So if this were to continue, in eight years, all the reserves would be, would be depleted, except for the endowment fund. And so the endowment fund would need to be used to pay for capital and operating, which would mean that property taxes would also need to increase, as this would not be sustainable in the long term. Okay, so to summarize, reserves provide financial sustainability. So if we have a bad year, it provides a little bit of a cushion until we have a better year. Reserves allow us to subsidize taxes or have more gradual increases. Funds are restricted or earmarked to ensure that we have funds to pay for future capital, operating needs, and obligations. And reserves need to be thoughtfully used and managed. Reserves need to continue to grow to provide investment income and be available for future, when future free cash flow is not sufficient. And I'll take any questions that you have.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? Counselor Hirsch, I see you reaching for your button.
Thanks, Acting Mayor. Thanks for the presentation. Something I've probably seen once or twice over my time, but having said that, I think it's very illustrative and it's good for the people out there, maybe for council, just to kind of understand, and I appreciate, quite frankly, West Council asking for a reserve kind of explanation. Why it's important is in a couple different ways. So the free cash flow model, I'm pretty proud of So the free cash flow model, I'm pretty proud of this, is the fact that we did, last term did change the 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 model. The idea being, when we do get revenues from our, I always call it the Medicine Hat Inc. side of the ledger, so the the corporate side, when we do have revenues, we have to take care of our assets first, and then whatever is left over can go into city coffers, that sort of thing, and that's vitally important as we've got an ongoing entity that we need to take care of. So that was a little bit about it. The idea, and I couldn't agree more on the reserves, the reason for that is, and you alluded to it, one, we preserve the ability to do what I call a cash call. So anyone that's familiar with a club of, say, a golf course, if you're a member, or if you're on a, in a condo and you've got, you know, all of a sudden you need a new roof, but the if the money's not available, now you have to do a cash call, and that's, in some ways, if we run really, really tight, where to the point where we find ourselves in a deficit, it's like a yo-yo, I heard the analogy today, doing a yo-yo as you walk up steps. So we're pr- we're actually doing quite well, projections there, but yet we're going up and down every year as we go along. So I think it's important that we understand why the reserves are there, what they're, and I think you explaining each reserve is very powerful, why they're there as well. I keep on harping on the delays in 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 assets that we need. I keep referring to the fire truck that was talked about. We had to order it years in advance. We have to make sure it's, you know, going to be able to suit our needs, but yet we have to count for that and have that in reserve. And that's kind of what it's all about. But again, I don't want, I think we'd be worse in a worse situation if we were to literally dissolve these reserves and then balance it like on a shoestring budget, which at the end of the day, you come back to the Citizens Medicine Hat, and it could be everything from, like you mentioned, five and a half percent increase, and that's just bare bones, never mind facilities for the future that we're looking at right now. So that there's some big ticket items. What I'm wondering, though, relative to things that line up, I'd like to understand a little bit of the budgeting process, and I know we go through it every year, but what? What, and maybe tell the audience, what is it on the consideration of versus nice-to-have versus have-to-have? And then what does that look like through the process when you budget? And then in turn, it creates the ask in the end, at the end of the budget cycle to say, sorry, like citizens, this is what we're going to have to do for interest or for tax increases. So just a little bit of enlightenment in that regard, because I I think everyone gets it that we have to have reserves, but well, how does that affect the taxpayer and and what does that mean for the budget?
Yep, thanks for the question through the chair. So as I mentioned, the must-haves or the things that we must do are really related to our maintenance and sustaining capital, and that ranges approximately 110 million each year. And that's including the municipal side utilities and energy. So that is something that we have to do on a continuous basis to keep our current infrastructure operating properly and being able to provide the current service levels that we have today. The the nice-to-haves, I'm going to say, are more of our growth capital-type projects. And you saw the difference that we were trying to bring forward in the budget process this year, where we were highlighting the growth, because that's where we have some discretion around that. The maintenance, the sustaining capital is something that we have to do. You have to do that every year. The growth ones are, should we, do we need a new rec center? Do we need these other items that are coming up? They're nice to have. They're going to improve our quality of life, perhaps attract people to our community and so on. But if we don't have the money and we need to spend it on our maintenance-type capital, is that, you know, we have to make that choice and that decision. So that's really where, how we presented the budget coming forward. If we didn't have the reserves, you know, you can get grants, of course, we've seen that dwindling from the provincial and federal government, so we don't have as much access to that. Debt, we know, is expensive, and it costs us over the, you know, 20, 30 years out. So there's a continu- continual expense for that. So reserves are nice to have, because we've we've got the money saved in our bank account, and it's easy to access, and we can pay for this. But we do want to make sure that we don't deplete our bank account and that we have money on an ongoing basis, so that if something critical comes up that we need to spend the money on, then it's available and and, you know, we don't have to go back to our ratepayers or our taxpayers and say, we need you to help pay for this, and therefore there's an increase. Hopefully, that answered your question.
It it does, and sorry, through the chair, I guess where I'm coming from is back to your point where you where there's an observation saying, you know, there's, City Medicine's got lots of money, and then suddenly, next year, we have a tax increase. So the inevitable question I get is, if you got all this money, then why are you increasing taxes? But to the see, to the your point, that we've created an adequate buffer that doesn't allow us to be on the shoestring budget, make sure we take care of today, and then we'll have that discussion on tomorrow in terms of growth, you know, around this table and around this horseshoe. So thank you for this.
And if I could add to that through the chair. So we ask for a property tax increase. However, we still have to fund that budget gap. So as I mentioned, in 2025, we've got 11.1 million that we funded through reserves to balance our budget. So we didn't ask for an additional tax increase. When I came forward earlier this year to propose a tax increase, we're actually funding 520,000 from reserves in order to keep the the municipal side of the tax increase, because we didn't have the additional assessment growth that we thought we were going to have. So we're able to keep property taxes at 5.6 and fund that 520,000 from our financial reserves. So, you know, there's a benefit to the community that we have that ability to go back to our reserves and minimize the tax increase or help subsidize some of that.
Thank you. Counselor Dubinowski?
Thank you through the chair. Thank you, Director Barter, for the presentation. I I always feel like after these presentations, I I feel good about a lot of things, and I'm scratching my chin a little bit. I don't want to say worried, but you, when you look at some of the free cash flow history, you know, there there are good years where even this council, as as an example, we kind of inherited some good fortune. I don't want to say good fortune on the backs of ratepayers, but but our ability to sell on the on the commodity side and and put some of that investment back, absolutely critical investment back into our into our our reserves and and notwithstanding all the different reserves, when you look at the longer-term draw, it it's, it starts to, the picture says, starts to portray much more clarity around, even though we're we're, we feel like we're, you know, flexing cash, we we have a lot of draws on those reserves, and there's uncertainty around, there's some certainty around where projections on forecasts are going to go, which are going to continue to to slump a bit. And then our draw, if everything continues, it's going to continue to change the the landscape of our of our current reserve picture. But so we're fortunate in in every regard, but at the same time, I'm always worried about or always thinking about, and certainly I've been here, and so I can say it because I'm part of that, but that that gap, that budget gap, that once upon a time was identified when the whole commodity world changed and and we didn't have the same ability to just pump more out of the ground and sell it and and offset our our losses or or revenue streams. It really changed the way we do business here. And so I guess, but kind of notionally, my first question is, if we we are different than most like municipalities, certainly in our province and maybe elsewhere in Canada, but if we were, because often that's how people look at things, well, if we compare ourselves too, are we are we in the same pictures? It's kind of like when you you come back from a vacation and you talk to your friends and you say, well, how much is on your visa and how much is on your, you know, and, oh, okay, I don't feel so bad, we're all we're all on the same page, or here's our plan to pay it back. Are we in a, are we in a better picture? Are we in an average picture or worse picture than another like municipality with the same kinds of challenges, notwithstanding the fact that we obviously have a utility which is very distinct? Are we are we doing okay?
That's a great question through the chair. It's always difficult to compare ourselves to other municipalities, because we don't know all the details about where things are at. I would say that Medicine Hat is fortunate to have the ability and the resources of our, you know, once oil and gas industry and now our electric generation industry. But that also comes at a cost or there's a downside to it, right? So you've seen the highs and the lows, right? You've seen that with the oil and gas, and now we're seeing, experiencing that with the electric generation side. There's going to be the good years and and the bad years. And so, like you mentioned, it it's just good practice to put funds away when we have those good years, because we know that we're going to have not-so-great years coming up. So I would say that Medicine Hat is fortunate in respect to having that, but there are also costs associated with that. So the abandonment asset retirement obligation that we now have has increased our liabilities, whereas other municipalities that don't have that won't have that revenue or expense or liability. The same with our electric generation business unit. Revenues are there, but we also know that there are some requirements coming up with energy transition, and what is that cost going to be and and, you know, what's going to happen in the future? So it's, I'm going to say it's difficult to say. We we've been lucky, and we've got the revenues, and we've built up our reserves. We've done a great job. I would say we're okay for now, but there is all this uncertainty coming up into the future, so it's it's difficult to say.
If I could, through the chair, yeah, no, I appreciate that, and it. But it's it's a good reminder. I think Counselor Hirsch said it too. I mean, we 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 have a lot of people go, we got all this money. Can't we just build another center or do this or do that? I mean, they're clearly delineated for very intended purposes, and they're being drawn down. And so the this is a great presentation for for everyone to see. And it's not to suggest that we we don't have the ability to do things, is we have to be very, we have to chart our course very carefully and with plan for for lean years and and hope for better years, right? When it comes to that gap, I guess, and again, I've been here, so I can say I've been part of the ownership of that or the budgeting that supported that. I know we allowed ourselves to believe, and I think it's fair to say, we can we can carry that, like, we can't deficit budget, but we can we can offset our budget gaps through reserves, but to to what end, to what length? And I my only, I only, and I supported this budget, this last two-year budget, but I'm I'm always, when I look at the landscape and I look at the draws and where we think we're going, and I'm thinking, we're going to have to close that gap at some point, because if not, if we had to overnight close that, it would be a significant jump to the taxpayer. Not trying to fear monger, but but if, even if we wanted to get halfway there, it's a significant hit to the taxpayer. So I'm just, I think, generally speaking, hopeful that we chart a course incremental or otherwise, but toward that closing of that gap. And I know that's easier said than done, because councils, past, present, and future will always have competing forces on those reserves, and you're you're, we're the what, near the how. And in the end, sometimes that how includes a budget gap that never seems to to entirely close. But I I'll leave it at that. It was, I was going to ask what your thoughts are on the longer term, but I know that the the MCC is going to change our whole budget and our whole projection and our whole funding model if we go ahead with that. So, you know, at some point, the next council will have to have even another update to this, which could be looking completely different in in fruitful ways, at least long term. But I appreciate all that you do to keep us balanced and to make sure that we we chart a course of prudence in our budgeting. So thank you.
Thank you. Just for clarity, this, all of these presentations will be in the consent agenda? Is that right, Acting City Manager, in the next package? So this presentation will be available for people to see?
Thank you. This is open, so it is available for the public in the current package. I don't believe, I'm looking at Acting City Clerk, that it would require consent, but I see her nodding, so I suspect it will go through that package. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you. I I was one that asked for this, for an explanation. I real, thanks so much for this. I think it's very helpful. A lot of people do ask and are confused about reserves, and and this is laid out very well. So thanks so much for the effort in this. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
And we'll move on to our final item, which is land and real estate strategy. And again, I'll turn it over to Acting City Manager, Pat Coast, to introduce.
Thank you through the chair. We will welcome members of our land and real estate team manager, Buckner, and John Sukachov, who'll be sharing a presentation to walk through the draft city land strategy. And essentially, this is a ni- nice dovetail to the discussions we've been having tonight, both on the economic development side and in a way also to the reserve side and the financial situation of the city as well. This work builds on recently completed real estate inventory analysis, gap analysis, and underutilized land and assessment and more, really striving for a data and evidence-based approach to decision-making. And Randy will highlight it, but there are additional steps from here, depending on council feedback, related to updating the related stra- policy, pardon me, as well as capital budget realignment. Our hope this evening is to encourage a good discussion around this topic. We are looking for a deeper engagement and an opportunity for feedback on this topic. So with that, I'll turn it over to Manager Buckner.
Thank you. Good evening. So we're very pleased to be in front of you this evening with our land and real estate strategy, and we're here today for your feedback. You'll recall in November of last year, we brought forward initial background work and data through the budget presentation process. So and a number of you will also recall some of this information through some of the numerous committee meetings. So Land and Real Estate has merged two land departments within the city to provide streamlined services to the organization and community when it comes to land ownership, management, and development. Over the last year, our team completed extensive work with a third-party Collier's Planning and Placemaking Team to bring data and facts to the table and create a baseline for a land strategy. The creation of the strategy also took into account feedback from the development community, community organizations like the Medicine Hat Real Estate Board and the Chamber of Commerce, as well as internal city departments. So the focus of the strategy is a five-year outlook on department actions and provides guiding principles and a refresh mandate. It is intended to be the department's roadmap and is intentionally intentionally provides check-in points with council through strategic actions like business cases, so that this council and future councils are able to have their input, make informed decisions, and that the city can remain current with the market. The strategy is rooted in adaptability and striking the right balance, setting up the department to take proactive steps to continue to support growth of the community and other strategic initiatives of the organization. So in tonight's presentation, we're here to get your feedback and your input and answer any questions that you might happen to have. This is the opportunity to have the dialogue, and then we can incorporate that into the strategy. The intent would be based on today to bring this back forward to council for information. And following that, we also plan to bring forward an updated sales and acquisition policy that we have substantially completed and will be looking to to finalize, as well as some next steps of resetting the capital budget that goes along with this. So with that, I will invite up John Sukachov, who has done an excellent job in leading this initiative, and he will walk through the presentation today.
Thank you for the introduction, Randy. So our table of contents, we're going to, we're going to just talk about some of the background methodology that went into the strategy. We'll summarize some of the policy context, which everyone here will be very familiar with. We'll get into some of our key findings from the analysis that was completed, and then we'll get into the strategy itself, vision, mission, mandate, guiding principles, strategic priorities, and proposed actions. So the City Medicine Hat owns and manages more than 5,000 acres of land and 200 unique So the city Medicine Hat owns and manages more than 5,000 acres of land and 200 unique properties. As as Manager Buckner said, in the middle of 2023, Land and Properties Department was merged with Environment, Land and Gas Production. This brought all land and real estate functions into one department, offering a more streamlined approach, both internally within the organization and working with customers on the land development side. In order to advance our mandate of this new department, we initiated this land and real estate strategy as a longer-term guiding document. We we worked with Colliers to complete a bunch of analysis, real estate gap analysis on the three main sectors of of the real estate market, an assessment of city underutilized land and a market sounding that included contacts with Realtors and developers from across Western Canada using the Colliers network and also within the within the community here. From there, we engaged with municipal leadership and the local development community to refine the priorities in the action plan. So the strategy was created within a context of existing policies and regulations, also with recognition of emerging themes and opportunities primarily from the Economic Development Department. A lot of the work that they're doing informed our outlook. So just to reference, for example, the city council's strategic plan encourages administration to pursue incremental development, so you'll see that in the strategic actions. It asked us to begin and end with data, so this is very much rooted in in a market assessment, the data. It also tasks administration with maximizing opportunities for infill and brownfield development, which you'll see in here as well. We also are aligned with the IDP and the MDP, where you get a little bit more granular. But, for example, focusing on brownfield development again, but also the north employment area as a critical, as a critical employment area. Some of the emerging direction that we've implemented or continue to digest, most recently would be the manufacturing industry report completed by the Economic Development Office, which suggests that many local manufacturing businesses are looking to expand in the near term. And so the challenge with land is, well, what does that mean for land development? When are people going to be looking to purchase land for new facilities? So to summarize the the background analysis, the first piece of work was a real estate gap analysis. This looks at existing supply and it looks at future demand. In this case, we assumed a 0.5% annual population growth rate, which is slightly less than what's in the MDP, just being more conservative as a business unit, looking to make calls with growth capital. So assuming that supply is introduced at the same rate as it is today or over the last five-year period, we can expect to see a gap of about 900 dwelling units by 2046. Depending on the density of land development, what kind of dwelling units these are, creates an opportunity for 100, 200 acres of saleable land. So this is a relatively modest gap, in our opinion, over the 20-year timeframe that we're looking at to 2046. And so given that it is a modest opportunity, and we also don't want to flood the market or or overtake the market on the private sector. We want to, we want to play a niche role. We want to fill opportunities where we can. It's important for us to consider how to fill this gap, meeting policy objectives, but also being responsive to to continued market demand. On the commercial side, the gap analysis found that there was an oversupply prior to the closure of PV Mart in Hudson's Bay of about 500,000 square feet of commercial real estate. And so you see this primarily in the downtown, strip malls scattered around town. Nonetheless, in spite of that oversupply today, to the end of the study period, the demand modeling suggested that a 1.3 million square foot gap would emerge by 2046 and that this gap could be accommodated on 200 to 300 acres of land, depending on the density again. And so if we look at our existing commercial zone land, we're sufficiently supplied at a macro level. It's where it's on the micro, it's on the more neighborhood level where the old saying that all real estate is local. Just because we have 200 to 300 acres of commercially zoned land, doesn't mean that everybody's looking at that location. And so there will be opportunities in other neighborhoods to introduce commercial land over the longer term to the end of 2046. And then the analysis that we completed didn't see any opportunity for new office space, owing just to the changing nature of work, existing vacancies. There would be limited land development opportunities for office. And a bit of an interesting caveat there is that, again, that doesn't mean that we're not introducing new office space to the community, but that as we do so, it tends to be ground level and more suburban and that that is ultimately resulting in perhaps higher vacancy rates downtown. So as we look at some of our policies on incentives and things like that, we want to keep in mind what does the market have to say about all this as well. So the office, that's an just an interesting anecdote from the study. And then on the industrial side, the market today appears to be balanced. Not everyone, you know, it's it's tightly balanced. We're assuming about a 3% vacancy rate. If if this continues for long, it introduces an opportunity for industrial land in the near term. But again, we're well-supplied with industrial land with existing zoned and serviced, light industrial, medium industrial land, commercial industrial land. Where we would see an opportunity as the city land bank is with the heavy industrial. And so the heavy industrial is is owned by the city. It's unserviced greenfield. And as we discussed earlier, there's the long lead times to the development of any heavy industrial opportunity, whether it comes from ordering specialized equipment. We feel that we can work hand in glove with those heavy industrial opportunities. And that, and should we be successful in attracting another heavy, another heavy industry or or a primary industry, that would then create additional da, demand for light and medium industrial, which can be accommodated on the existing zone and service land we have in the community. Similar to commercial, though not everybody's looking at the same location, there is preference for other neighborhoods within the community, and so we have to keep those opportunities in mind as well. For underutilized land, working with Colliers and our GIS department and other departments in the city here, we looked at about, we looked at 400, 4,000 acres of under, what we determined was underutilized land. And we then sort of filtered that land. We put it through a a filter to identify what would be the best nodes within the city to focus on for development. And this was a mix of both private and publicly owned land. The findings there were very consistent with the MDP, that we would be looking at a commercial expansion node, giving existing zone land on Highway One, near Briar Park and Box Springs, large, large parcels of of vacant land that would be well-suited to highway commercial. Downtown infill node would provide opportunities for mixed-use densification to address demand, especially we're seeing in the last couple of years for higher density forms, as well as retail space over that more medium-term timeframe. And then finally, an industrial build-out node at exi, at existing industrial parks. The existing industrial parks are not utilized to their fullest extent. Not all the parcels there are highest in best use, so those will continue to thicken up. And as businesses look to expand, we do have zoned and serviced land available within the community as we continue to work to attract heavy industrial or primary manufacturing businesses. And then finally, some of, some of what we heard from the market sounding, which was Western Canada-based and also locally, continue to market, marketing the quality of life that we have here in Medicine Hat to folks that are moving here already, from Alberta and B.C. Some people suggested tying in more tightly with the Highway Three Agri-Food Corridor, some of the marketing initiatives in the Lethbridge Cold area, and just continuing to position Medicine Hat for that agri-food processing. So very well-aligned with what economic development is working on. Some of the challenges that were noted was our distance from major markets does increase some, some of our costs, makes things sometimes a little more difficult to accomplish here in Medicine Hat. So we do have to account for that when we're looking to be competitive with some of our neighbors. Low absorption and high vacancy of retail and office space was noted, as as was Medicine Hat's demographic profile. You know, an older and slower-growing community than many in Western Canada. And as no surprise, approvals and permitting was noted. I think that's common in every city across, across the land. So from the analysis, we worked to develop some guiding principles for land and real estate. I think as many people around the horseshoe will know, land and real estate can be a controversial topic on occasion, especially as we pursue some infill opportunities and and attracting certain industries. There's always lots to discuss. So a principles-based approach to land and real estate portfolio management is intended to help guide all transactions in a fair and transparent manner as best as we can, given the commercial sensitivities that we operate within. Beginning and ending with data is one of our guiding principles. It's intended to help the team make informed decisions that are aligned with policy objectives, but are also well-aware of the of the of the realism of the market. Collaborating with internal and external stakeholders is intended to foster open communication amongst the departments of the city, but also with other developers, with homeowners, homebuyers. And this will help us to support a focused approach, especially on the land development side. Prioritizing economic, environmental and social factors will help to ensure that what are fundamentally financial decisions are well-balanced with broader needs of the community, whether it's social, environmental, meeting some of those needs where return to the city, that free cash flow that we just heard about, isn't always possible. We need to keep in mind that we do play a broader role within the community. And finally, being responsive to customer inquiries and working with internal and external stakeholders will help us to find win-win solutions that are aligned with all legislative and regulatory requirements. Very quickly, our mission, vision and values. The mission that we've come up with is to deliver a modern approach to municipal land and real estate portfolio management that balances the economic, social and environmental considerations, so recognizing the multifaceted role that land plays within the community. Our vision is for a forward-thinking land acquisition, disposition and management. And the values are to be knowledgeable, trustworthy, responsive, collaborative, adaptable and compliant with all the regulations that we have to be compliant with. So taking this all together and rolling it up into a mandate for the newly-formed department, as the city department that acts as a one-stop shop for all real estate matters, land and real estate has a dual mandate. First is that land and real estate is responsible for delivering property management services for all land that's not held within another portfolio within the organization. We refer to this as the land bank. The department also will provide internal consulting to other parts of the organization, whether it's to negotiate a lease or to help with a right-of-way. We're that internal consultant to the broader organization. The first mandate is meant to be municipally funded, operationally focused and revenue-neutral. The second mandate is around land development, marketing and sales. This mandate involves opportunity identification of capital-funded projects where land and real estate can fill a niche and and generate that, hopefully that free cash flow back to the organization. Ultimately, revenue generation helps to offset the expenses of managing the land bank and provides potential to return that dividend back to the organization. So the priorities and actions are shown here on, in a table format. The strategic priorities are defined along departmental functions. So the first function there is to leverage the land and real estate portfolio to create value for the organization and the community. The second priority is to do with land development. And so as land developers, we will be adaptable to land development opportunities by taking a business-case-based and stage-gated approach as first principles that inform growth projects, land development projects. And then finally, to drive that land development, to drive that revenue, the department will lead with proactive marketing and sales to ensure that projects make financial sense, that the projects resonate with customers and that they deliver win-win solutions for the community and for the organization. So from here, I'll dive into more details on each of the strategic actions. The first one is portfolio management. Portfolio management is a process of aligning the land and real estate holdings with the strategic priorities and program requirements to create value for the organization and the community. So in in plain English, looking at some of the council's objectives, some of council's directives as they emerge in time, but also that longer-term planning to to generate that value. So how we intend to do that is to optimize the value of the leased la, of the leased land, the land bank. As it is today, leased land benefits a number of commercial, civic and community users who can realize a greater benefit of the land here and now as we wait for the city to develop out to that land in many cases. And those leases help offset the ongoing costs of operations and maintenance. Randy's team has made great strides on this all already and will continue to do so. And we're really taking an entrepreneurial sort of forward-looking approach to that leased land bank. Second, we want to manage acquisition and disposition of land and real estate to realize city objectives. This is worded with intent in that buying and selling land are important municipal tools that can be leveraged to meet community needs. And so I think about, you know, what happened with the fire hall in the food bank, you know, sort of five years ago, as an example there. Buying and selling land, swapping land can help meet community needs such as for affordable housing, food security and recreational services. So recognizing in those cases that a financial return cannot always be realized, the department will support those decisions in order to balance all the other factors that come about through council-approved and other community plans. And then finally, over the course of the next five years, what we want to end up with is a data-driven land and real estate portfolio management framework, working very closely with asset management department, with finance, with other departments within the organization, to create a decision-making tool that ultimately creates value for the broader organization. We'll work with with those relevant city departments in order to optimize the value of the land portfolio over the long term. Strategic priority number two is referring to land development. And the key here is to be adaptable. So we're operating in a, in a framework that is very policy-driven, but we also have to keep in mind that pull from the market and we want to look to balance the two. So as the municipal land developer, we've identified four key priorities over the next five-year period. First, from the gap analysis, we know that there's an opportunity in residential real estate. We also know that as the city land developer, we're running critically short on parcel of lots for sale. So in the, while in the medium term, the city and the region as a whole has sufficient supply of serviced residential lots for sale, we do see an opportunity to proceed, to refresh a business case for Ranchland, Ranchlands 3C, for the Ranchland subdivision. We want to keep all of our options on the table for now. We want to bring those forward to council as it is a growth project. It requires a major decision on behalf of council. But we do see that the medium opportunity there, the the midterm opportunity there to proceed with a business case and start bringing that through, using that stage-gate approach. Secondly, we want to explore the opportunity. Secondly, we want to explore the opportunity for commercial land in the north residential sector. So from, from the gap analysis, we know that commercial is currently oversupplied at a macro level, but the, this gap analysis dove into sort of segment by segment. And it does identify, you know, maybe a half a dozen segments of the commercial space where it's currently undersupplied. And this is jiving with some of the phone calls that we're receiving within the department. And the focus right now seems to be interest in the, in the north side of the city. So we're going to look at, we're going to look using the planning and design work that's already been completed for Briar Run. We want to look at what, what would an anchor, what would a commercial anchor look like within that plan? And, and go from there. So really just the opportunity identification phase, but to start to advance that work. Based on some of the calls that we're getting, but also based on that gap analysis showing that there is an opportunity there as well. Thirdly, we've, we've spoken about heavy industrial this evening, both with economic development and here. We've, we've always, we always have a few irons in the fire. Major, major manufacturers, base, base industry that's interested in Medicine Hat. As a, as a historic manufacturing community, currently as a major petrochemicals manufacturer. And so we want to continue working with our colleagues with economic development and utilities to continue to attract that industry, to work on those long lead times, those very difficult projects. We want though to advance it as much as we can by de-risking the land. Not moving away from holding the greenfield unserviced land. But Selena kind of mentioned beginning to look at how could we de-risk it? For example, could we put some right of ways in place for rail? If and when there's a serious inquiry that, that needs that, would that be helpful? These are difficult decisions to make, but we want to start to just continue to advance that Northwest industrial area. And then finally, we want to revisit the arena site and bring forward a comprehensive project plan to council for consideration. So negotiations on the last deal there, those ceased following the pandemic in 2023. Since then, there's been a bunch of studies, a bunch of work done on that. Facilities for the future eliminated the arena as a future site for consolidation, consolidated rec facilities. So that wasn't found to be highest and best use of that land. As part of the gap analysis and the underutilized land assessment, we completed a financial feasibility. Found redevelopment of the arena would not be viable, given current market conditions. And only more so if you add in the cost of demolition and removal of the, of the facility. And so on that note, we are nearing completion of a, of a hazardous building materials abatement cost assessment. And taking all this into account, we want to bring forward a comprehensive plan to council, including financing options. Grants. How, how are we going to do this? And it's a, it's a pretty big elephant to chew on. Number three, we're going to lead with proactive marketing and sales. This one is personally important to me. I think we have to listen very, very closely to our customers. What are our customers want to purchase at the end of the day? And this is also gets to be a complex issue. And I, I believe very strongly that listening to our customers, listening to our community is what will help us advance some of these sale, ultimately what are land sales, but what become new homes for people, new apartments, new dwellings. New businesses. So specifically for this priority, we do have inventory that is been on the market for more than five years. Since before the pandemic, through the pandemic and, and today. And so we have to look at that and we have to update the marketing and sales plans. We've divided it here into the infill lots and also the inventory at the regional airport. In both cases, all the, the market conditions have changed. And so we want to bring a commercial reset under existing policy. We'll bring that reset to council for approval for a new sales and marketing plan on those parcels. And then to continue the work that is, is very exciting and very challenging. It would be to identify from the underutilized land assessment, but to meet those policy objectives around infill development. It would be what are the next, what are the next parcels that are city-held, city-controlled that we could bring forward for development within the city center sector. So we did complete that initial analysis, identified the city center sector as, as well suited to that. And so we just want to continue with that analysis as part of a broader asset management plan, but also with an eye towards bringing the next suite of infill sites to, to council for their consideration. So. Randy alluded to the next steps. We hope to have a good discussion this evening, integrate that discussion into, into the final document. And then from there, we want to reevaluate the departmental budget and, and bring that forward either through the ordinary budget procedures or through special request as necessary. And then immediately, we would look also to bring some policy forward to be updated for approval. And from there, the strategy over the next five years will be implemented and updated on an ongoing basis with major items, major growth items brought to council for their consideration and a decision. And I think that sums it all up. Thanks for your attention and we're happy to take any questions.
Thank you, John. It looks like Counselor Dumanowski's first up.
Thank you through the chair. A couple tigers go. I see they want. My question to you is around that ranch lands 3C development phase. At some point, and I, I could be incorrect, but were we looking at the kind of development, we, we talked about where, where there's a gap. I use that word a few times today already, but are, I know more larger sized, I'm going to call them estate type lots to compete with, you know, who down the street? You know, at the same time, we have a different kind of development strategy. We're trying to keep things more heterogeneous, et cetera, but is that the kind of, is that something that's on our minds or on the horizon? First question.
I'll maybe turn it over to Manager Buckner, but I'll provide. I think the business case-based approach, Counselor Dumanowski is intended to address that question. We do have a policy framework that we work within. We have the MDP and the, the area structure plans and, and all these plans. But the market conditions are always changing over the long term. In the last couple of years, we're, we're really seeing a lot of apartments and condos going through. Not so much on the single-family homes. At the same time, there's ongoing demand, of course, for single-family homes, larger lots. And so from my perspective, it's, it's what's going to make the most financial sense on that site. Taking into account that turnover time is an important factor in that financial decision. So that's one perspective.
Through the chair to Counselor Dumanowski. With ranch lands specifically, there's an area structure plan in place that's been approved. And through this process, we want to revisit is, is that the right, the right policies and the right design for what could be the next residential community and building that out? And is it single-family homes and what is the market demand for that? And what are the size of sites? And I think in revisiting that, there's the opportunity to learn from maybe the approach to some of the other city-led residential developments and striking the right balance between lot size and the location. But also understanding as well in our community, we have about 150 private residential, single-family lots that are being brought on through private development. And so is there a gap that's, that comes up because of that as well? So through the business case approach, we can really do a deeper dive into the current ASP and what changes maybe need to take place in that? And then what are the, the cost implications to the city as well?
Just quickly supplementary, the old arena lands you referred to is a big elephant to chew on. I, I don't necessarily disagree. I, it's, it's funny that just recently had a conversation with people around that. What's next? What is the city going to do about that? And I mean, it, I don't want to say conventional wisdom, but certainly the, the wisdom of a lot of people I talk to is unless the city does, takes, does their part to remove the old arena, it, it, it will sit as in its current state forever. And, you know, we have to balance out development costing and cost benefit, et cetera, to the, to the taxpayer and through our land department and any proposals that could come forward. But it just seems to me, and it, it's like, I liken it very simplistically when you're looking at a new house, there, there are some people who will walk into a house and they just dislike the color of the paint on the walls. And so they, they remove themselves as a prospect buyer. But as soon as every element is aligned, including the paint color, they're, they see themselves. They start to envisage themselves as being there. Bad analogy, but you get my drift. Like if we remove that arena, we, we have a nice polished, readied state of land that I think would, would increase in, in interest. Is that just me dreaming or is that something that when you said we're kind of looking at that? Is that kind of the idea that we're looking at is we would demo it and then, and then we would hope for, for another development? When I think about what's going on in next to Lyons Park. I mean, I don't know what the finished product's going to be like and what, what a kind of an, you know, we know what kind of an economic impact it will have, but part of it is economic impact, a big part of it, but it's also creating vibrancy, creating density in, in an area where we already have infrastructure. We're not having to build out and create this urban sprawl. So there, there are, there's a multi nodal kind of benefit analysis from my lens of things that can be had there. So maybe you answered the question, but I, but it sounds like the arena lands is something we're looking at in a very serious way. Thank you.
Counselor Hyder.
Thank you and through the chair. I just would like to take some time to give you accolades. Randy and John, your presentation was fantastic and I was actually very excited about what you presented. Your strategic priorities, you explained everything from commercial to residential to industry. I, I really appreciated it. It was so informative to me and it made me excited about our community again. So I hope all these things come to fruition and that we work well to bring some growth to our community. So thank you.
Counselor Hirsch.
Through the chair, yes, I agree. Very good presentation. Thanks for that. I, I guess, I just put here, and I guess we're all guilty of, of some situations where it didn't go so well in terms of land and planning, et cetera. And I just had, I just wrote my observations. Number one, any land for sale will follow economic trending. Just, and, and what I meant by that is I've seen in the past where we would place a, a price on a particular lot. And then it goes up and down, the economic cycles go through and we don't change the price. And for me, as a land, if you have a land developer in a private world, they're in two camps. They're either spending money for raw land that they need to develop or they're sitting on developments and there's not much middle room. So it, it's incumbent upon them to price accordingly and then move on to the next, next project. So I appreciate that. The next piece, opportunity risk. What dollars are we leaving on the table year over year in absence of an active real estate program that, to which you've presented? And I think one thing that we need to understand is that, yes, we have a lot of land, but it's almost, it's, it's, it's a, it's a heavy asset that we're not leveraging because we don't get any benefit from it. So if we turn around, sell it to a developer or sell it or develop ourselves and then we get housing in there or whatever, whatever the plan suggests. We get that recurring tax revenue infinitum. So that's, that's important to me. I, I like the fact that you've tied in economic development and the incentives and a, and a really deep dive in terms of, you know, you, you'd mentioned we've got a lot of land, but it's not always, you know, available for people that want things right now. Or maybe not in the right location. But I think that I really just appreciate the fact of the activity and the paying attention in terms of what the market's at. I think that's very important. And again, so historically, and why it's important to me is that good old Sam is seven. So I think there was an intentionality to almost, and, and this is historical within the city, to move the market rather than look at the market in terms of what the needs are. And I think that took us years, almost a decade to unwind. Probably, and I don't know, the financial doesn't, doesn't matter to me. But the reality is, I think if we're going to be in the business, I think we begin, going to need and have to be attentive in terms of, I, I can certainly understand of where we are. And the lucky thing for us is that we have land development, that we can work with our municipal planners to kind of coordinate and what, and maybe set off some developments. But it's, it's a, it's a, it's a double-edged sword because if we don't stay on top of our developments, then all of a sudden now we're in a shortage, which in some cases, we're really short on lots right now as it is. And so I've always been asked, you know, why are you in the land development? Well, really we're either in or we have to be completely out. But I, but I appreciate the fact that we're in, that there's an active plan, that you're, you're looking at it in, in the eyesight of that it must, that it has to be rather than, than just a passive portfolio. Because I really do think the fact that we've got a bunch of land and we're not developing it, A, it stunts our growth. If we're not actively looking at doing something and having some motivation to do so, it hurts us in more ways than we can understand. So, so I see a lot of nods and I think I'm on the right, hopefully I'm on the right track and, and you're feeling somewhat comfortable with my comments that were in line. So, but again, I appreciate the presentation and I'm, I'm quite excited of what you guys are up to. So thank you.
Counselor Van Dyck.
Thank you through the chair. I'm going to jump around. I have a few comments to make. And one of them hearkens back to the economic development presentation because it's tied in with this. So first, I think it was very smart to have a combination of the land departments. I think that that can create efficiencies within the organization and prevent potential internal missteps that could occur when there's not as good of communication between two areas that are, have different directions. I really appreciate strategic priority number one. I appreciate that there's a recognition that the city's objectives are not only economic, but that there are other forms of value that we are rising to meet within the community. So there are social aspects like you referred to. And so I think that's important and I'm glad that it's in the strategic priorities. I, I think that without de-risking the arena lands, they're just going to sit there forever. So any move towards doing that, I think will be very valuable. If I was a developer, which I'm not, I can't even imagine what that kind of world is like. But I would look at that and then turn around and walk away. So whatever you guys can do to work towards making that appealing to developers, I'm very supportive of. And then finally, I just wanted to say, and this is regarding the Northwest industrial area. I think like Counselor Dumanowski had asked previously, what are things that we could and should be doing? I would be loathe to approve spending on development of an area when we didn't have very specific industrial interest and commitment in that area. Just because then you're, you're really limiting what can happen there. You're really having to wedge yourself into very niche even like areas or how the deep utilities have been put in. And I don't want to pigeonhole any future growth in that area when we have such great large areas that can be developed into lots of many different. such great large areas that can be developed into lots of many different things. So I think kind of holding back on that a bit, making sure that industry knows what is available to go in there, but not doing the work in advance, apologies. I think is this the smart way forward on that? And I would hate to spend taxpayer money on developing something that actually puts us further behind. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Counselor Knuttl.
Thank you, Chair McGrogan. My question is perhaps more likely suited for acting city manager Pancoast. But I'm just curious, Counselor Van Dyke's comments sparked a light bulb in my brain or curiosity about the waterfront district. And I'm just curious, is that at this point? Like, I know that it's probably not dead, but is there any energy going into the waterfront district as a concept, as a plan? And again, like I said, this is probably more suited outside of land and development. But yeah, so I'll just start there.
Through the chair, I will turn it over to acting managing director Popoff for that answer. But I believe the simple answer is the concept specifically no and otherwise as articulated by the land use by law.
Thank you through the chair. Yes, I'm aware of a concept. It's been prepared and we've got plans to be looking at potentially doing a a city center plan or a downtown revitalization plan. We haven't quite come to the sculpting of that yet in terms of what the title would be. And we can certainly revisit that type of a concept and interface. My understanding was that there wasn't a lot of interest in pursuing it at the beginning of this council mandate. And so it was reprioritized. And we move forward with with the land use by law refresh and other projects. But certainly it exists and there's potential there. And if there's a renewed mandate to look at that, we certainly will.
Follow up if you're okay with it. Yeah, between Counselor Van Dyke's comment and the the comments around the table, I understand now I'm I'm trailing, so I'll I'll keep it quick. But I just, I picture the the visual in my head is the old arena and how many people would cross the streets and go to pubs. And that's something that I feel is kind of a, we're we're missing at this point. But I'll I'll leave it there and hopefully there's an opportunity for that conversation again in the future. Thank you.
I like leaving it at the pub like that. That's a good way to. I'm I'm just curious about a couple of things. One is, this is a big audacious thing out there. And I wonder if there's been any thought in the future visioning of something like a weir in our city? And I I don't have any way to jump back, but is there been any conversation or any visioning around what that could do for our economic development? If we think of, you know, a weir in a river? And I I know it's out there and it's it's not tomorrow. But has there been any thought about that? That's one of my questions.
I could take a first crack and if perhaps acting managing director Popoff or a member of the London real estate team have more to add. My understanding is that the city has looked at a possibility of a weir on a number of occasions. And I believe several years ago, prior to this council, there was consideration for a recreation based weir to support extra efforts, whether it was for the waterfront opportunity and or Ecodale enhancement tourist opportunities. My understanding most recently is that their, the interest has once again picked up, but it's not from the recreation perspective. It's more from the water management opportunity, given recent droughts and broader water management interests in the area. But we could certainly revisit unless others around the room have it have more up to date information than I do.
Seems not. Go ahead, Counselor Hirsch.
Well, we did, I do recall in previous iterations of council that we did have this discussion. The only challenge is environmental and the location of where to put it because of the flooding. So anything past effectively the city of Medicine Hat is doesn't add any value. In my, my day job, I guess, I I do have conversations with SMRID and others that have indicated they would love to have obviously more holding, which goes back to the point that managing, acting city manager Pancoast indicated to have the ability to control a little bit of the water. But again, it the understanding that we have, it might be upstream to which location wise, I don't know, be an hour out of Medicine Hat or something to that effect. But they have to find a location that can suit a bunch of different things. So I think it would be almost out of the jurisdiction of the city of Medicine Hat. And moreover, it might be a conversation for provincial representatives to start chatting about.
Yeah, thank you. And again, I it's, I was just curious if it weaved into economic development. I think of, you know, whatever a waterfront might look like and also our environmental issues with water and control of water. So I was just wondering where that conversation went. Another question that I had was around development of land that where we don't have the pipes in the ground yet, like Ranchlands three, I'm thinking doesn't. So have, is there any, through the the work with our consultants, has there been any consideration to, you know what, let's turn that stuff over to private developers? You know, we know we've got a bunch of inventory in the city that we can, that we still need to move. But has there been any just thought around around that?
Through the chair to Counselor McGrogan, that is a consideration that we have in advancing the a business case for these areas. Those are options we would also consider of based on the status of the land in, say, Ranchlands. Is there interest in other land developers who would be maybe interested in acquiring that land and finishing off the development and seeing that through? And is that advantageous for the city? Or is it advantageous for the city to take on that development ourselves? So that that is a key part of the the business case approach. And being able to ensure we can bring to council just all the pros and cons and what the advantages or disadvantages of those options could be.
Thanks for that. Counselor Knuttl.
Thank you, Counselor McGrogan. You also inspired this question. So through the chair, I'm curious about what, what is the consequence? So say what Counselor McGrogan occurs, what Counselor McGrogan has suggested occurs. And a developer takes on the the final steps or the final staging to ready a parcel of land so that it's buildable. And so I'm picturing the, there, there was, there's a neighborhood out by the church in Southridge in the Sunrise area that has had empty lots forever. Like it's been, I think it's, it was labeled as the mill at one point. What happens, what can we offer as an organization on the other side if everything kind of falls apart? In regards to the developer taking on this obligation, things are, and things don't translate into anything. Like, is there anything that we as the the city do to support? Like, I understand it's it's a free market and these things happen. It's like starting a business and the business not transpiring into anything positive. But do we have any supports when that sort of thing happens?
Through the chair to Counselor Knuttl. With with land development and if if the city is taking that on or if a private entity is taking it on, there are steps we can take to de-risk the land. And that is really baked into the strategy and some of the initiatives of are there barriers that we could be reducing? Or as Selena mentioned with her presentation of streamlining processes or making it easy for maybe private developers? And and how can we help even translate sometimes what what that looks like? For certain areas where if, say, the city was selling land for a private entity to develop it, there are also means that we can use through agreements to to ensure both parties are are content with the level of risk that we're taking on. And so that's something that we would consider with future areas like Ranchlands. And if we were to look at that as an option, how are we balancing the city's risk? And also a private entity is going to be considering, how are they balancing their risk? And so as we get further along with looking at those options, that's something that we could, we could dig even deeper into.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if we gave you the feedback that you might want. I just was curious about weirs and stuff, and I know that's kind of way out there. But I don't see any further questions. So thank you again for the presentation. Again, I think there were three excellent topics tonight. And seeing no further agenda items, I'm going to suggest that we adjourn. Thank you very much. It's eight fifty. Thanks so much.